We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for October 3rd, 2017, 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, which you issued.
I'll offer motion to approve those.
Second? We got a motion to second approve the consent agenda items. Any more discussion on any? Seeing none? All in favor, we say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Just for the record, we are missing two councilmen and Mr. Mack and Lisa Fisher. So, they had their commitments, so. We'll go on to item number 2A. Conduct a public hearing to consider a request for noise variance for Shane Zuzdorff and Heidi Home to have amplified outdoor music during the wedding reception to be held at the 26th 20th North Street on Saturday, October 7th, 2017. Anybody like to be heard on the ordinance?
Public hearing.
It's public hearing.
I think we have the requesters present.
Anybody have any questions for?
I had to have a question, Mr. Chair. If there was any concerns by any neighbors, any letters, any phone calls, anything like that. Okay, thank you.
Hear none? Entertainer resolution? Close of public hearing? Subsequent to the public hearing, a motion to offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing, authorizing a noise variance to permit amplified outdoor music from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM during their wedding reception to be held at 326 20th North Street on Saturday, October 7th, 2017.
And congratulations.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry. I was busy congratulating.
You two gotta get together because you're gonna be doing a lot of...
I know, we gotta work together tonight. We gotta work together real tight tonight.
All right. No more questions? Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher? Oh, sorry, she's not here. Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations, thank you.
Item 3A, number one, consider resolution approving the application of Randall and Barbara Paylor requesting conditional use permit to locate one apartment unit in the building situated on the property Zone B3, which is General Business District at 410 First South Street. Dave?
Okay, the subject property is located east of South Minnesota Street and north of First South Street. Located on the property are two buildings, and they directly about each other. The first building is a two-story brick building and it currently contains two dwelling units. That building is not part of this request. The second building, located right next door to the east, is a one-story and it has a white exterior. That's the building that is proposed for conversion from what have been a variety of different types of commercial uses in the past now to a residential unit. Right next door to that are two parking spaces. So, in the past, the city council has approved a number of requests for apartment units in the downtown B3 zone. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the request at their September 28th meeting. They identified five reasons for doing so, and those are noted in the action form. There was one condition, and the condition was that the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit with Brown County. Any questions?
Nope, thank you. Anybody having questions, comments? Seeing none? Entertainer resolution?
Not hearing any, all for resolution, waive the reading approving with one condition, the application of Randall and Barbie Paylor requesting conditional use permit to locate the apartment building and the unit as stated.
Second? We got a motion to second offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3B, number one, consider a motion to approve the bid for Midmore, or with Morecom to create specifications for a high-definition equipment upgrade in the City Hall Council chambers. Steve, go ahead.
Okay, so we're looking to upgrade the video equipment in the council chambers to HD. The first step of this process is to hire an AV consultant to prepare the bid documents for the bidding process for an AV integrator. We consulted with two different companies, and the one that's the Cable Advisory Board has recommended is Morecom. So we have the proposal in front of you, and...
Do you want to pull that up and so we can take a look at that? Hi, Mr. Chair, I also sit on this committee and have for quite a few years. This is really, when I started on the council ten nine years ago, we had pretty state-of-the-art stuff with plasma televisions, and now we're kind of taking a look at, taking that next step. This is just some options of other council chambers that we're taking a look at. So this company will come in and give us some ideas on options that we have, again, depending on our layout, and we do have that, some of those pillars that kind of cause problems for us, but they'll give us some recommendations on what would look the best in our council chambers. These are just three different potential options, right? Steve?
Correct. So this consultant has a lot of experience working with government, community access channels, and putting together HD equipment for them, so that's why we have decided to recommend them, so.
I do have just one question. I mean, okay, we had 12,000 budgeted, this estimated cost is just for the creative design, creating bid documents and bid hosting, correct?
Correct. And that, yeah, the 12,000 is just for the AV consultant budgeted, so...
That's good news.
There's also some optional additional services that after meeting with the consultants, we decided to currently not move forward with those, just based on what it is that we're needing and, you know, what I can work with my staff on completing that I wouldn't necessarily need them to do. So, they offered, down the road, we could potentially ask for those services, but right now, the key options are the ones presented, the design creation, creating bid documents and hosting the bid.
And some of the concerns, you know, that we've had from the general public who watch these meetings is that some things are not clear enough when we're pulling up maps, sometimes lot divisions, sometimes they're fuzzy enough we're not reading our name tags even clearly, which that isn't all bad, but they want to see clear stuff, they want to see what we're looking at, and I think that's where in that technology age where we can now provide that, so I would support this as well. So I'm gonna offer the motion to approve the bid for Morecom to create specifications for the high-def equipment.
Second? We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Ron, you can pull that screen down.
Item 4A, number one and two, consider an ordinance amending Chapter 20, Part 5 of the City Code, the City of New Ulm, relative to cable television franchise, second reading of ordinance number 17-018 and ordinance number 17-019, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number 17-018 and ordinance number 17-019, fifth series. Roger.
Fifty-some minutes last time. Should we have him read that again if he waived it?
Just to highlight it.
I'm gonna offer motion to waive the reading of the, second reading of this series, and to adopt, and then a motion to, do you want to do those separate or do you want them together?
We can do them together.
So I'm gonna offer motion to waive the 54-minute reading, and offer a second motion to adopt the ordinance 17-018, ordinance 17-019, fifth series.
And then I believe Roger has a little change in his reading.
Yeah, in the last few weeks since the Public Utilities Commission had the opportunity to review this, they've asked that some language be put in directing the depth for which the cables have to be buried, and there is some federal code that applies to this. So I just want the council to be aware that with respect to each of the ordinances in subdivision 3A, the following language would be added to each ordinance. All underground network-powered cables installed by the grantee in public rights of way must be installed to a minimum depth of 12 inches, equivalent to the depth specified by the National Electrical Code for residential branch circuits rated for 120 volts or less. That is new language that was not in the original reading, but would be included in this ordinance.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? With that being said, I'll give it a second. We have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number 4B, consider a motion to contact or contract with Boltland &amp; Mink Incorporated to provide professional services for the 5th North Street reconstruction project. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. As previously authorized, city staff solicited and received two proposals to provide professional services to deliver the 2019 MSAS project, which is 5th North Street from Garden to North Highland Avenue. The firms that submitted proposals were Boltland &amp; Mink with a ranking of 43.5 and WSB and Associates with a ranking of 42.5. Staff was quite impressed with both proposals, but we're recommending that we award the contract to Boltland &amp; Mink at a fee amount of $144,539.
Thank you. Any more questions, concerns?
I moved a contract with Boltland &amp; Mink Incorporated to provide professional service for the 5th North Street reconstruction project in the amount of $144,539.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item 4C, consider a motion to contract with WSB and Associates Incorporated to provide an intersection engineering study for North Highland Avenue and Center Street and Oak Street. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. As recommended by the Safety Commission and as previously authorized by the city council, staff solicited and received three proposals for a traffic engineering study at two intersections on North Highland, Center Street and Oak Street. We received two very strong proposals, WSB and Associates with an average score of 25, which is a maximum of what was available, and Boltland &amp; Mink with a 23.75 and SRF Consulting with 22.5. Staff is recommending that the contract with WSB and Associates with, in the amount of $9,480, be, we're recommending that that be approved.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we have, you know, there's a lot of controversy on this particular topic, and Mr. Kaler, could you talk about the timeline on this and what they're supposed to be doing with this request?
Yeah, Mr. President, the original recommendation from the Safety Commission was to determine whether there were warrants for four-way stop conditioning at both, at either or both of these intersections. I didn't attach the RFP or the request for proposals, but it went beyond that, and I, that we are gonna count traffic, turning moments, delay, and if warrants for signals or traffic's stop signs are not warranted, then we'll look at other options and recommendations that may create a safer environment for not only the pedestrians, but also the vehicles that have to go through those intersections. So, we're looking at getting this back to the Safety Commission in, I believe, November or December, and get it to the city council in late December or January. They've gotta do some counts with tubes and cameras, so we want to get that done before the snow starts to fly.
Well, this is my ward, and I know there's a lot of controversy up in this area to make sure that we're as safe as we possibly can with a new school and getting used to the new traffic up there. So with that, I'm gonna offer the motion to, to contract with WSB and Associates to provide an intersection engineering study in North Highland and Center and Oak Street in the amount of $9,480.
Second? We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item 4D, consider a resolution approving the MinDOT Office of Barrenautics Grant Agreement Number 1029490. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. Previously, the city council approved a airport master plan, airport layout plan and zoning update, and accepted a federal grant for that work. In addition to that, you authorized the contract with our consulting engineering firm of Mead &amp; Hunt to do the work. This is the kind of third and final puzzle. It's the grant from the state of Minnesota to cover 5% of the cost of the master plan and airport layout plan update and 70% of the zoning update. So, we are recommending approval. I think their amount is $55,833.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
Moved to adopt resolution, waive the reading, approving MinDOT Office of Barrenautics Grant Agreement Number 1029490, and authorize the city manager, finance director, execute the agreement and on, for and on behalf of the city of New Ulm.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5A, consider authorizing a replacement of the Keesling House windows and siding. Mr. Schmitz?
President Schmitz, Tom Schmitz with the Park and Recreation Department. And counselors, you have before you a couple of options for the Keesling House. The siding and the windows at the Keesling House need repair and/or replacement, and you have before you a couple of options that staff have put together, one of them using wooden materials at a higher cost initially and over the next few decades, or lower maintenance materials for lower cost upfront and less cost over the next five decades. And so that's really the first question, is how would you like staff to proceed with repairing or replacing the siding and windows at the Keesling House? Wooden materials are viewed as, you know, more historic and appropriate with a historic structure, and would probably, you know, qualify us for a possible grant. Low maintenance materials are viewed as less historic and will probably not allow us to apply for grants. But that grant question is after you answer the first question about how you want us to proceed with materials.
Ron, I have a picture of that available, if you want to pull that up. I think everybody knows this house anyway, but just in case they forgot.
One comment that I want to make is I've got the luxury of sitting on the Park and Rec Commission and on the HBC Commission, but I have been dealing with the Keesling House for the past 20 years with this question. What are we gonna do with the siding? What are we gonna do to develop the site? I mean, I appreciate the Park and Recs going out, getting the estimates and whatnot. Personally, this building is in the Commercial Senate Historic District. We kind of dictate to a lot of people how they can do their façades, how they can do their windows and whatnot. I'd like to see the wood goes back in. I'm not really gonna use these 50-year projections, checking with some distributors and major contractors, checking with Claybough Preservation, who actually did the study for us in '13. Those are kind of fictitious numbers. That's a, that's a dart-throwing. You know, how do we know 61,000 over 50 years? How do we know what the clad board or cement board, 11,000 over 50 years? I mean, my take would be, historically, I want to see it go back to the wooden materials and move forward.
I support that as well. I think that we have a very historic building in our community that would be kind of like putting a plastic leg on Herman the German or something like that. So I think we have to keep it as genuine as we possibly can, and we don't know what grants are gonna be available the next three, four, five, 10, 20 years from now that might be able to help us with other investments and upkeep for that particular building. So I also support that we maintain the wood materials.
Were you looking, Mr. Schmitz? Did you want, like, the building official and Mr. Wire to get together and see what's available, contact Shippel, what the new grant cycle is? I know on the last one, we did do the roof with the shake shingles, that was actually too small of a project to even apply for the grant, what was $11,000, and this one being 24. Hopefully it's not too small, but it's definitely worth looking into. But my take still is, put the wood back on and make it look like it was in, as close as we can to 1861.
I would agree.
Do we have to replace the wood? My question is, I went up there, excuse me, the reason you see a lot of bare spots is because I did peel some off, but it, I know you're not supposed to have it, but the building, the material underneath isn't that bad, I don't believe. I mean, some of, there's only maybe one or two of the sills that are actually bad, in my opinion, and I'm not a professional on this by any means, but have we even looked in contracting somebody or talked to somebody to remove the existing paint and stuff like that? Maybe there's some product out there, maybe it's gonna be less costly, I don't know.
President Schmitz and counselors, the first question is how do you want staff to proceed with wooden materials?
Definitely wood.
Then we, if that's the wish of the council, staff will go back and, you know, reexamine the specifications and determine if things can be repaired instead of completely replaced. So, I think that's the first action I'd like, you know, for you to do.
A comment to that, you know, if you do read through the report done by Claybough in '13, he did have some ideas, he dealt with a lot of historic buildings. I mean, Keesling House is old, balloon-type construction. At first, they thought there were bricks inside, no insulations, whatnot. I mean, they've got some good reasoning in here, why the paint isn't sticking, why is it sticking in places? Some of those explanations are in this report.
So if you direct us to go with wood materials, then we've got a second question for you.
All right, let's move it on, then. I'm gonna offer a motion to authorize a Keesling, authorize replacing the Keesling House windows and siding with wood materials estimated to cost initially 24,268, and I'm not gonna put the rest of that motion in there now.
Second? We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. Now I would like to mention that, you know, how would you like us to fund this? Would you like us to fund this with city park and rec dollars? Or, which can be done relatively soon, possibly even over the winter, or would you prefer us to go for grants which may take significant amount of time? And so on, so...
Am I correct that we have 20,000 in Keesling House budget, correct, for this project?
Correct, yes. So we're only, would be looking for an additional, we anticipate initially $35,000 total for the project, parts and labor. You see, the parts are the 24 grand. So, you know, I, I'd like to try to move this project forward expeditiously. I think it's something that we probably can afford locally, but it's your decision. If you would prefer to extend the timeline on this and work towards applying for state or federal grants, that could take, I don't know how long, six to 12 months before we, you know, get the authorization to proceed with construction, and I would like to see moving this forward expeditiously.
I would, Mr. President, I would agree with you as well. This is one of our premier buildings, and it looks terrible, and it's a terrible blight, in my opinion. We need to get working on this and get this done, and, so I would recommend we move forward on this. We can always look for grants for the inside and for other areas in the near future that need repair, but let's get this part taken care of. I feel bad of when we have visitors coming and looking at this saying, what are you guys doing in New Ulm? Let's get this fixed and get it moving. And plus, you know, as we're seeing how it's peeling, you know, it's, it's gonna be starting to rot more wood, is it, is that exposed wood, so...
Well, I guess I'm gonna disagree on the rotting. Getting it fixed right away, yes, but the material that's used here, I don't think are rot because it's cedar. So, it just looks like hell. I agree with you, and we need to get it taken care of. But if more people grew up like me and peeled off, we could maybe paint it, but we could replace it.
Find some retired people to paint this.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Did you read the letter from the lady from the Twin Cities that she sent to Kathleen Backer?
Mm-hmm, yes.
It didn't sound like she thought it was bad. She thought it needed to be repaired, she thought it needed to be redone, but as in all old buildings and historic buildings, if you have to wait for Shippel to get, decide whether they're going to give us something or not, and Elwood has been doing a lot of work with Shippel, and he's been contacting up there for quite a while on this project, just like Counselor Christian has been in the past. You think we could wait on this decision until our building inspector gets back and he can tell what he's discovered from Shippel?
Want to table till the next meeting?
No, my way in is, put the wood materials back on, let's move forward. I've been dealing with it for 20 years. You wanna wait another year, another year?
If you don't work on it now, in the next month, it's gonna have to wait till next year, and I just soon get this, another six months of looking like crap, I don't agree.
So, Tom, you answered questions, where the money comes from?
No, one quick question, you know, if, President Schmitz, counselors, if the, if the cost figures were 10 times or 100 times what we're talking about here, which will be the case at Herman Monument for that restoration, I would certainly advocate going for grants.
Yes.
But I think that the need for this completion expeditiously outweighs the need to, to go for, you know, a 10 or $20,000 grant, but that's up to you, that is definitely your decision.
We're gonna have a lot of people coming into town in the next two weeks here, too badly to get done. It'd look better.
We hang a sign, paint's coming soon, or siding, new siding coming soon? Kathleen, can you take care of that?
So do we want a motion to go forward with it and get it done? With the wood? That's what you're looking for right up?
Yes, I'm looking for direction.
We have authorized a motion already.
For the wood materials. Now it's whether or not you want to go with park and rec funds or extend the timeline on this project and attempt for grants. Tom, do you have an idea of what you have in your fund balance? Well, it's not an enormous fund balance. I think it's around half a million dollars, so $15,000. If you got 20, and this is 35, $15,000 is what we're talking about. Right. I'm confident it can be absorbed with Fund 215, the park and rec fund.
Sounds good, motion and...
I'll up for that motion right there. That come out of park and rec reserves.
Second? We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5B, consider a motion to confirming the appointment of Dr. Herm Louter to the Board of Health and Services for Health Officer, serving as Health Officer, sorry.
A motion to approve the confirmation of the appointment of Dr. Herm Louters to the Board of Health, serving as Health Officer, to fill the blanks by a term of Dr. Avery Rourke.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Item 5C, consider contribution, contributing to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Environmental Action Fund. Brian?
Mr. President, city council members, we've done this, this will be the third year. I've been sending materials to the city council over the past year of the efforts that the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has pursued as it pertains to wastewater permitting, and as noted, we're also a member of MISRB through the PUC, and that's a neutral science-based organization that doesn't get into the politics, just relies on science to prove the need for water quality expenditures. The total amount is a little over $4,700 and we have in the past been splitting it between the city and the PUC 50/50. And we've had good luck this last year. Minnesota Police Control has backed off of a few of the issues that they were pushing. And I would recommend that we continue because there's still, you know, more to do.
I would agree and I'll offer the motion.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Item 5D, Consider Resolution Approving the Cooperative Construction Agreement Number 1-028465 with the state of Minnesota for project Trunk Highway, there we go, 1415 Reconstruction Project. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a construction cooperative agreement with the state of Minnesota with regard to the Highway 1415 Improvement Project scheduled for bid letting later in October and construction over the next year and a half or two years. Basically, separate north from Broadway across the Minnesota River to the intersection with 1415 and Nekle County 21. This cooperative construction agreement allows us to share some project elements such as sidewalks, replacing some municipal water main, sanitary sewer, et cetera. I believe that the city attorney did have an opportunity to review the agreement and has hopefully satisfied any questions that he may have. The total cost of the city for this is just under $382,000. MnDOT has approximately 32 million in it and we think it's to our advantage to tag along with the MnDOT and finish this project up. We do have the MnDOT project engineer Zach Tess here, if anybody has any particular questions for him or myself.
Anybody have any questions?
I think the general public has some questions about start times. Can you want to talk about that a little bit?
No, just up to the podium. Just state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
Zach Tess, out of Mankato, Minnesota, 132 Cita Lane. And here with MnDOT, as your city engineer Steve Kaler said. As your city engineer mentioned, we have the project out for bid right now, our advertisement to contractors. It's a four-week advertising period. So we'll open bids October 27th. At that point, we'll, we'll have an apparent little bidder. We go through the process of awarding the project over the next 30 days. And then a contractor will get started this winter at some point. They've got some flexibility, but they're required to do a certain amount of tree clearing and grubbing that's offline. It won't cause any detours. But because of some concerns for threatened endangered species, notably the northern long-eared bat, they've got to do that work outside of a pupping season for the bats. And so, not to belabor the point, but the detour will likely get started early April next year. That's the contractual requirements.
Still 22 months. Right? That I remember.
I haven't done the full math, but I can talk through the dates. But it'll, detour will start April of next year and go through October of 2019, so. There's two different detours associated with that. I guess, yeah, I think it's longer than that. I'd highlight two things associated with that. We'll have, once we have a contractor on board, we'll get together with the community again and open it up to the public to lay out the contractor's schedule. And then probably in the, sometime in the next month or two, we're going to be pushing out some videos associated with those detours to get people ready for the construction project. If you recall, we did a, we did a video on Highway 169 between Mankato and St. Peter when we were trying to get people ready for the construction. And there's some regional movements there that may not be familiar with it. And so, we had kind of put out that video on social media and had a lot of hits for those just not living in the community. And so we'll do something similar here with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
With that being said, offer the resolution, waive the reading to approve Cooperative Construction Agreement Number 1028465 with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation for project 0804-81, Trunk Highway 1415. Reconstruction project, authorize the city manager and finance director sign the agreement.
Second. We got a motion in a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5E, Consider Motion Approving the Final Assessment Roles for the 2016 MSAS Improvement Project and Set a Date for Public Hearing for Tuesday, November 7, 2017 at 4:30 p.m.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Item 5F, Consider Motion to Receive a Petition to Construct the Roadway Improvements on the Alley in Block 152, North of Center Street and Set a Date for Public Hearing for Tuesday, November 7, 2017 at 4:30 p.m. You have anything on that, Steve?
No, Mr. President, the next three items are all alley petitions. You can go through the details at the public hearing or now, whatever you prefer.
Okay, thank you.
I'd prefer a public hearing, so I'll move that motion as you stated it for Alley in Block 152, North of Center Street and public hearing for November 7 at 4:30.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Item Number 5G, Consider Motion to Receive a Petition to Construct the Roadway Improvements on the Alley in Block 10, South of Center Street and Set a Date for Public Hearing for Tuesday, November 7, 2017 at 4:30 p.m.
A motion to receive the petition for the alley, Block 10, South of Center Street, public hearing November 7, 2017 at 4:30.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Item 5H, Consider Motion to Receive a Petition to Construct the Roadway Improvements in the Alley in Block 143, South of Center Street and Set a Date for Public Hearing for Tuesday, November 7, 2017, 4:30 p.m.
November 7 is going to be a busy day. I'll move this motion too.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any more discussion?
We might need extra chairs. I don't know.
Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Maybe that'll be the meeting. I'll take off and you can run it.
Yeah, there you go. Kind of like last time.
Item 5I, Consider Resolution to Grant a Public Right-of-Way License for the Bruce Melzer to park a trailer on the street located at 315 Monument for a period of March 1 through December 1, 2017. Mr. Schnoebrecht?
Well, I'll take care of this. Mr. Melzer submitted a...
I still need to get used to that.
It truly the world. Submitted a right-of-way license request to the city and because it exceeded 14 days, I said it, that's a city council decision. City attorney may have some other comments on this because this is not typically a temporary sort of thing, even though the trailer comes and goes periodically. It's, the applicant is asking that the trailer be allowed to sit on the public right-of-way from March 1 to December 1 of every year. I'm not sure what happens after December 1 through March 1. Maybe you go south. I don't, I don't know. But the fact is that he's looking to put that on the street. What you have is the front of his house. There's an alley to the left side of his property and that's the trailer he's talking about. Currently, he has that trailer chained to the small tree that you see there by the bush so that it can't wander away because that's where all his piano tuning equipment is located, that he takes with him to certain projects. So, maybe city attorney, if you want to expand on?
Roger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I looked at the agenda item and the application and I think, as you could probably tell from the application, what's going on here, I think is sort of putting a round pig in a square hole. The application, as it's normally presented to the council, I think is primarily either for a temporary construction situation where someone needs to park equipment or otherwise do something on the streets, or if neighbors are having a block party or something and they need to temporarily close the street. Quite frankly, as a city attorney and looking at our code, I'm not really finding any legal authority for the council to override the general parking prohibition for this long of a period of time. I think it's just something that's not really provided for. We do have situations where the council is authorized to park a trailer for living quarters or to carry on any business practice in any vehicle. So I guess you need to decide if that would apply to this and also the presidential importance of allowing someone to park a trailer on the street indefinitely. I don't know the business Mr. Melzer has, why he couldn't park the trailer in his garage or in a commercial building or a storage unit or something like that.
On driveway?
I've got some real concerns about having it parked in the street and generally whether or not the council can even grant this kind of an application.
My take on the topic, agreeing with Mr. Hipper, I'm going to move to deny and the problem won't hit us in the face. I see a setting, even if we try to set a precedence, I remember one that went into effect about city manager up to two weeks could grant use of the right-of-way for construction trailers, jobs going on instead of coming to the council once a week for these, but this, to me, this application, I'll move to deny.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second, any more discussion? It's a resolution, I take it, right? Offer the resolution, waive the reading?
To deny. You want that? Resolution to deny?
No.
Well, I think if you just deny.
It'd be a resolution to approve. I don't know if it's a resolution to deny.
We got a motion in a second.
Motion to decline.
I'll second it.
All right, any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Item 6A, Consider Accept of List of Claims Paid and Approve a List of Claims to Be Paid. The list claims paid in the amount of $6,438,372.43 and to be paid in the amount of $927,285.85.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We got a motion in a second, any discussion on any? Seeing none? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos no? Motion carries. No more business. Meeting adjourned.